Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are we ready, Crystal? All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you everybody for coming tonight. We're blessed with nice warm weather for November, that's for sure. Roll call, please.
Karen Straffan?
Here.
Tom Feder?
Absent excuse.
Tom Kruger?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
Here.
Cindy Valentine? Here. John Horvath?
Here.
Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. First thing on agenda, we have a public hearing for a special assessment of Aquatic Management. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved to open the public hearing.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support to open up a public hearing for a special assessment of Aquatic Management at, we'll call it 7:31. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. This time we open up public hearings for the special assessment, I don't have it in front of me, it's buried, but Aqua Isles. And this is our second public hearing. I did receive, or we did receive, a letter, I'll read it to the board, or to, for the public hearing. It's not just for the board, it's for everybody. Dear Board, I wish to protest the special assessment being a part of my taxes. I feel everything I have worked for is in the hands of the township. This should be a separate billing as it was, as it is for the Colony Drive improvements. I do not approve of canal spraying. If this was done when I was buying a home, I would have not moved here. How can people who say that they enjoy the wonderful Great Lakes be in favor of this treatment? If someone in this dead zone is selling their home, shouldn't that be a necessary disclose in their perspective, to their prospective buyer? I feel this decreases the value of my property. If anything, my taxes should go down, who wants their children, friends, family, swimming, and chemicals? If natural habitat cannot survive, how can there not be a problem? Again, I am not in favor of this being a part of my taxes. Sincerely, Carol Carroll, 7283 Aqua Isle Drive. Do we have any comments, or anything for, anything else on this special assessment?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the Aquatic Management at 7:33.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion? Last call. Going once, gone. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, we have bills payable.
I make a motion to approve the bills payable in the amount of $168,405.94.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? I wanted to point out one thing, our share of the cost for replacing the Cross Culvert and Folker Road was $10,888. So it came out to be about $21,600. And if you recall, the work order, it was actually like $28,000, so it was well under their estimated budget. Okay, hearing no discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes. John Horvath?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
At this, at this time, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda, if it's appropriate at this time. For number eight, I would like to see a discussion of Chapter Four Policy Matters, the second part, that we have received in our packet, put on, for just a couple comments. Keep it in consistency as we go along.
Part two.
Part two of Chapter Four.
So, under New Business Eight, it'll be Chapter Four Policy Matters, Part Two. Did you get that, Crystal? All right. I got motion, do we have support?
Support.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Consent agenda, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting on November 2nd, 2015, and synopsis, the reports from the Water Department, Fire Department, Police Department assessing report, building and zoning report, and a code enforcement report, a notice, SOM Sturgeon Resolution, Legislative Update 111215, communication letter regarding special assessment, already already read, and a request to approve assessors' certifications for Barb at $325 and Sherry at $175.
Should that be swapped?
Support.
What about the public comments?
Well, I forgot public comments. We have motions and support, we're gonna hang on to that. Do we have any public comments relating to any business on the agenda? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not gonna read all that again.
Okay. We have motion and support for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose? Motion carries. Moving right along, we have our supervisor's report. Just want to remind everyone that it's actually gonna be next year, but the St. Clair County Road Commissioner is gonna be having a meeting here at our hall, May 17th, 2016, at seven o'clock. So if anyone wants to address road issues directly to the St. Clair County Road Commission, you'll have a chance to do it here. Still been doing a lot of facilitating with the Crispin Drain. They were hoping to get done by the end of this month, huh? Not gonna happen. I'm guessing first week of December, maybe the second week, they are taking, you know, everyone's going home for Thanksgiving, so, but the project's moving along pretty good. If you notice, we did replace all the shrubs around the township hall. We talked about that last meeting, and they finished it, I think, this Friday. And, let's see, the police building addition's going out to bid starting tomorrow. So any builders interested in putting a bid in, contact me, I'll make sure you get the bid packet, and the drawings or whatever you need. I think we're gonna hold them, hold it open for about six weeks because, over the holidays. I think they're, I can't remember if we're gonna have them do like January 6th or 7th, you know, around in there, so they, they got a little bit of time. You know how these contractors are with deer hunting, and they're gone. Same thing with expanded electricity in the park, actually, these bids are due in two days, the 19th. And I'm still working on our SWIPI permit, the stormwater permit, and doing stuff with the auditors. You notice they started tearing down the North Channel Party Store today, it's flattened. And I just wanted to mention and give big kudos to our Elginak Muskrat football team, they're district champs, and I went out to River Rouge Friday and saw them, you know, they played one heck of a game, and boy, they should be holding their heads high. And then also, cross-country runner Morgan Beatlescomb, he, he won the second state champ, state title. He won it last year, and he also repeated it this year and won. And he went down to Indiana this Sunday, actually yesterday, and he ran in the Nationals and took seventh place, so good for him, did well. Upcoming events, Elginak Lions shrimp dinner, the 25th, the day before Thanksgiving, it's a fun event. And Christmas in the Park next door, it's gonna be December 5th. I believe they're lighting the tree at five o'clock, but there's gonna be all kinds of all-day event, and there'll be, I'll get some literature and stuff on that going forward. But that's, that's turned out to be a great event, and last year, we, it expanded quite a bit last year, and it was fun. That's all I have.
Wow.
Record time.
Wow.
Record time.
Wow.
I know. Okay, moving right along, unfinished business, we have a peddler's permit on there still, and I did put a sample of the MTA's peddler's permit, there's some things in here I kinda like, and other things I don't. Maybe they're gonna attempt to morph what we have and what we were talking about changing, and this one into one document for our review, hopefully for the next meeting. I did like one part in here, they require that they give us two references of other communities that they've received a peddler's permit for, so we can call them up and say, hey, you know, any issues? Because actually, we did issue a permit from somebody, or for somebody, a couple, three weeks ago, and we had complaints from them. We went and basically pulled their permit, our finest boys in blue and gals went out and told them they weren't welcome. And then I think, who was it, East China called us?
Fort Crash.
No, Fort Crashit. And, or yeah, we called them, and told them wouldn't do it, and they didn't, but yeah, I think that's a good, good step to add into ours, so. Any discussion or anything on?
The only thing I don't like about it is so long.
Yeah?
I mean, because it, it duplicates itself many times if you read it carefully.
Yeah.
You know? I don't know why we can't streamline some of these down a little bit.
Right.
That's just my opinion.
Oh, I agree.
I agree with that, with, I agree with the same thing.
Less is more.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in this case, right here.
I know, yeah.
How many pages are there? There's one, two?
Nine.
Huh?
Nine.
Yeah. Every peddler that we give a permit to is gonna read this. It's a test. If you pass the test, you guess right.
Okay, anything else on the peddler's permit? Moving right along, new business, approved fire department personnel protection gear. Daryl?
Looking for approval to purchase five sets of turnout gear. It's complete sets, helmets, boots, gloves, turnout coat and pants. As you see, there's not a second quote there. Fire decks and Scott and all them, they don't like to bid against each other, so, you know, once you get a bid proposal from one, there's only a few places that sell for fire decks in the state. I could purchase it online, but then I'm not gonna get them out here to do any measurements and so on, so that's who we've been using in the past, Frontline Services for our turnout gear. Prior to that, it was Globe, but they've got our build spec and everything, so that's why I only have one quote on it.
Is the price consistent on what we paid before?
Yes.
Is this for replacement, or do you just need more?
Yes, this'll be replacing stuff that's going out of date, or out of date already.
Is that one of your budget items?
Yes. If you notice, it's, it's split up between line items, because the auditors have come in and we've changed how we're doing it. We've got a line item that's less than 5,000, we've got a line item that's more than 5,000, so really, there's not a place for it.
How do you want it?
Next budget, we'll have to figure out how we would like to do that, but it got split up after the fact with the auditors, so we will, you know, whatever appropriate line item it needs to be, we'll have to adjust that.
Okay, so are you gonna go third, third, third?
I would say personal protection equipment would be where it should come out of.
Yeah, just one, it should be a separate.
Correct.
Yeah, line item, personal protection. So it's $2085 per, times five, right?
Correct.
So we're looking at, what, $14,000? $425. $425, is there any shipping or anything on top of that? Okay.
They drive it out here. They, they come out, measure, and drive it out afterwards.
Really? Yeah, it should. And just for everyone out there, this, I mean, this personal protection, it's expensive stuff, like a pair of boots is $270, but it's one of those things you gotta have, and I would not want to go cheap on protecting our firemen and firewomen, so.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of personal protection equipment from Frontline Services in a total amount of $14,425.
Support.
Okay, we, motion and support, any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes. John Horvath?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. Moving right along, Resolution 201536, to proceed with the special assessment, the Aquatic Management Special Assessment. Just so everyone knows, we pass, yep, we pass this, and it will go on to our tax rolls, right? This is the last step, so.
Yep.
Just want to make the board aware.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 201536 for Aquatic Management for the canals between Aqua Isle and Riverside, Riverside and Park Lane, and Marina Drive between Aqua Isle and Park Lane, a special assessment to confirm the assessment roll.
Support.
And can I make a note, that it was requested of us by the citizens, some 90% to do this?
Right.
Just so everybody knows.
They receive a little over 90%, and if you recall, we changed the requirements, instead of 51%, we're requiring 75%. And we're also requiring that they actually go and attempt to knock on everybody's door or get either a yea or nay. In times past, they would just get 51% of the people, and then they would stop, and the other 49% wouldn't even know anything about it. And then they'd be calling us, I didn't know anything about it, well, now they do, so. That being said, any more discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we're revisiting this, on the dangerous building, the 5810 Point Tremble. Reason is, this is back on again, we did approve to tear it down, and it's kinda ambiguous in the ordinance, what happened, they went and got a building permit. And then over the allotted amount of time, under this building permit, it kinda ceases our, our tear down, but not one thing has been done, not one nail has been put in, not one anything. And so we do have the right to go forward and tear it down, but it was unclear if, I'm doing this to err on the safe side, it's unclear if, if we had to bring it back to the board for board action or not, so just to be safe, I brought it back, 'cause I sure hate to tear this house down and then have an issue. So, that's why it's back before us. Any?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to demolish the, to order the demolition of the building at 5810 Point Tremble Road as a dangerous building.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any, any more discussion?
No, I think they've been given plenty of time.
Oh, yeah, I am.
I mean, we've, we've tried to work with them, and.
Am.
Obviously, he doesn't want to work with us.
I don't feel guilty, but I just wanted to cover thy own.
All ducks in a row.
Yes, that's a better way to put it, so. Um, I don't know, do we have to roll call on this? Probably wouldn't, no, I don't think we do.
I don't think so.
No, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Can you look to see if you can burn that one, this one, Daryl? Get with me in the next couple of days, I, I think it, it could be, so it would be cheaper, that's for sure. All right, four on the, on our agenda is transfer requests, $36,500 from General Fund to Special Assessment Debt Service, this is.
Yeah, this is the same thing we did last year, when we, when we refinanced three of our bond issues into that refunding bond, we raised the water rates and the debt service charge in the water fund to pay the increase in the, in the, in, well, not the increase, but the debt service on it all. But the, the Colony Road Fund is out there by itself. They're not getting the revenue in, because all that's going into the water fund, and they still have the same payments they gotta make. So, in order to make it whole, we have to loan, not loan, we have to give them money every year to handle the difference. We tried to, to finagle maybe a way to get a service charge, or a management fee or something, from the Water Department back to the General Fund, but our auditor's timing us there, too, saying that we have to have support for the maintenance charge, and we can't just do it arbitrarily. So, to make a long story short, we're stuck making these transfers from the General Fund to Colony, probably for another, I think, four years or so, until the, until the bond is paid off in that fund. So with that, I'll make a motion to transfer $36,500 from the General Fund to the Colony Road Special Assessment Debt Service Fund.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion? That's probably a roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes. John Horvath?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The next, I wanted to get an outside message, board, this is for the pier. I got a couple quotes, they're real similar. What I wanted to do, though, is get the, the recent, instead of having the regular bullet board, the cork, they make a rubber one, it holds up a lot better on the outside. I believe this first one is actually a little cheaper, but with that upgrade, that was another 120 bucks. Basically, I, I'm not sure if they're shipping on this either, I'm sorry, but if the board would allow me to go 1,400, whatever one's the cheapest, it will cover it. And this is so we can put it at Pearl Beach Pier to post our rules and notices and things on, on the pier. And I do have a couple other signs, one for poaching, and other ones for, what kinda warns people about not eating too much fish and, and everything that I'd like to put down there also. And this would, I'm sorry, this would come out of Parks and Rec.
I'll make a motion that we allow $1,400 price tag to purchase a vertical message board for the pier, and give our supervisor that option, too.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion? How's it gonna go with hunter green, dark green?
Sounds good.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, so sad, we have to accept Chief of Police resignation. So, in short, our Chief of Police is resigning effective the end of this year, and, you wanna read this? I don't think we need to read it. And.
If we don't.
Well, I know it, that's what I'm thinking. We just might not approve it.
That's why I made the motion.
Well, I'll make the motion that we accept Chief of Police resignation from Mr. Donald Drake, that was addressed to myself, Supervisor Bryson, October 30th, 2015.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion?
I, I think we need to thank Chief Drake for all the years of service that he's done here, and wish him the best in his retirement, or, which I'm sure he'll have many wonderful days fishing and swimming and traveling around, so we'll miss you.
Ditto to that.
Yep, I, I think it should be noted, he's been working, serving for Clay Township since 1999, and he's been doing a great job, and he's, he's leaving our department in good shape, and, yeah, well, sorry to see him go.
Not to get too sappy here, but, you know, I was.
Red Wings are on, you know.
Yeah, the Red Wings are, I gotta say this, though. I was supervisor in 92 to 96, and we went through a couple chiefs at that point in time, and, you know, we had a merger with Elginak, and that went, went south, and, you know, basically, at that point in time, I always thought that our police department was kind of in an uproar, okay? And sometime not too far after that, Don came on, and I think the, the improvements that he's made in our police department, and the type of people he's got working in there now, is just, it's like night and day to what it was, you know, 15, 20 years ago. And I'd like to personally thank him, as not only a township member, but, I mean, a township board member, but also a resident of Clay Township, for doing, I think, a fine exemplary job in not only running the police department, but getting its staff the way it is and running the way it is. I, I just can't say enough, I think it's a, a great thing you've done, Don, and I'm personally sorry to see you go, and I'd like to see you here forever, but that's just me. Have fun, good luck with whatever you decide to do. That's all I got.
Okay, we do have motion, and we have support, right?
Yeah, I supported it.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I'm gonna oppose.
You would.
Didn't you make the motion?
Done?
Yeah, I know.
You have anything you'd like to say, anybody?
Yeah.
While we're doing this?
I just wanted to thank the board. I know I got interviewed in the paper, and I had asked her to put in that I've worked for a lot of the boards, and she failed to do that, and the cooperation that, that I've had with the boards, including this board, and the support that you've given us, the police department, and everybody has been fantastic, and I want to thank you. Also want to thank my wife, and all the guys and gals. They've done a great, great job, and I think they're gonna continue to do so. I think that this is a great police department, but it's time to fade away, so.
Thank you, Don. I gotta tell you. All right, next, we have on our, on agenda is how we're gonna fill the Chief of Police vacancy, and I kinda wrote up a synopsis with, with our different options, and does anyone have any questions or discussion on it, or?
I know Artie recommended, my recommendation to the board is the following, I personally think that's a real appropriate way to do it. I don't. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but that's what we're here for tonight to talk about it. So, please give us everybody's opinions as to what you'd like to do.
Said what I had to say this afternoon.
I, I'd like what you've presented to us and I, I go along with it. It's a very fair thing and it's a, a good way to do it, I think.
Okay. I'd like to make, well, let's make a motion and we can discuss a little bit more. Make a motion, we appoint Mike Coach as interim Chief Police effective December 31st for a period of not more than one year.
Support?
Okay, we have motion, support. Basically, my feeling is, I've talked to Mike Coach and, who is now our lieutenant and has been doing a great job. And I've probably talked to 85% of the police officers in private. And, and I think he has their support. But this, this is gonna do a couple of things that I, the way I see, you know, we can put Mike, let him act as chief and see that he likes it himself and give him the reins. And, and I'm sure he'll prove his, you know, satisfactory or do a great job. And also, you know, it gives us a chance to look at, see how he's gonna do and everything else. It's a win-win situation. You know, and we have four or five different options or routes we could go. Myself personally, I think this makes the most sense for, for the police department and for a smooth transaction.
Transition.
Transition. And, you know, I myself, I'm a fan of hiring within. And it keeps it a more, you know, we always say how our police department is the community police department and, and it will basically keep that going forward, so. And I have all utmost confidence in Mike Coach to do a good job. Any more discussion or anything?
I assume that's something that.
Mike, why don't you tell us you want the job? Come on up and tell us you want the job.
Be nice to know.
Well, I can say it's something that it's definitely a life changer, not only for myself, but for my family. And took a little time to discuss it with my family. Obviously, I've discussed it with everybody within the department and I can say it's quite humbling that every person in the department's come up and support. And I gotta tell you, that, that really takes you back. We've got a great department and we've had a great leader for a lot of years. And I've worked side by side with Don since he came here in 1999. And all I can say is we're gonna keep going in the same direction. And I really appreciate the board's vote of confidence here and we will not let you down. Thank you very much.
That's a big yes.
Thank you, yes.
Yes. All right. And, and I did actually talk to the union, but what we're gonna do is he'll probably, I mean, it's up to Mike, but he's gonna take a leave of absence from the union. So, you know, there is a door to go backwards if he so does choose, so. That being said, any more discussion or anything? Okay. Yeah. All in favor of appointing Mike Coach as interim police chief? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mike. All right. All right, so I assume there'll be a little transfer of knowledge and you're not gonna kick Don out of the office tomorrow, are you?
No, we're just making him pay for more breakfast.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna be invited to the party though, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, next eight is our discussion on Chapter Four Policy Matters, Part Two. Joanne, why don't this be added on to our agenda and?
I wanted it to just be consistent with what we've been doing and to move it right along. And you'll notice that you got the, the book, the Policy Matters textbook, because I felt it was important because there's a lot of notes that they, when you're looking at the various policies, that there's some good points with notes.
And that's some bolts.
Yeah, so I, I just felt that, you know, not everybody has that book, so I just thought you should all have access to what, what is in, in the book, so. That's why you got two, two separate accounts receivable and all the rest of the stuff, which is, it's pretty lengthy and it's pretty, a lot of stuff to, you know, digest. Lot of stuff we do, a lot of stuff we, we don't need to do because we are doing it. So, just to keep you all informed as we move along. That's all I have to say about it. If anybody has any comments, I'd be glad to hear.
Just briefly, I noticed it seems to be written in, for an environment that doesn't use a fully integrated accounting system.
Right.
So, you know, we'll have to go through it when, when we decide finally to adopt all these things and look at them with the, with the thought that, you know, we have BSNA and, you know, one entry goes everywhere and then realign some of the things we gotta do here. But our accountants have been doing a pretty good job making sure the segregation duties is there and all the checks and balances are in place, so. It won't be a problem, it's just something we're gonna have to address, that's all.
Yeah, and I definitely feel, you know, that they'll get involved when we.
Oh, yeah.
Do, do this. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? Right, public comments, do we have any public comments? All the public out there, no comments? I hear you talking underneath your voice, you know, whispering back there. None, no public comments. Okay, board member comments. Joanne?
We're still, with the planning commission, we're still in the final stages of approving the specialist, special land uses in our, our ordinance. And it'll be probably ready to come for public notice in January sometime. We should be up to snuff and have all the changes and all the stuff going forward. So, you'll hear more about that.
Okay, thank you. John?
You're free.
I'm free. Cindy?
Um, oh, boy. I'd like to congratulate our muskrats and Morgan Beatlescomb.
Yep.
As well as Mike Coach, Chief Drake, have a great retirement.
Okay, Karen?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, Tom?
I already said my piece, congratulations, Mike and Chief. Have a fun retirement.
Yep, also I'm gonna go on that, congratulations, Mike, and I'm sure we'll be talking a lot. And I just wanna personally thank Don Drake again too, you know. I got in this office and he's helped me out the past three years. I've been in his chair quite a bit and, and, you know, I consider him, you know, you know, a professional, a professional relationship. But, you know, he became a friend of mine too, so. And, you know, I'll miss having coffee with you in the morning and, or you, or I'll be half asleep in the morning in my office and you come and turn the spotlights in my window and stuff and wake me up and all that kinda stuff. But I'm sure you'll have a great retirement and I'm sure we'll see you around too, so. Thank you.
I was serious about the party though.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, you think?
Yeah.
All right. Does anyone have any, anything they wanna see on the agenda next meeting? It's not till November 7th, I believe.
December.
What? December 7th.
December 7th.
Yeah.
The day that we'll live in infamy.
That's right. You know, in Japan, they have it as December 8th because it was.
Time difference.
The time difference, so.
I gotta tell you, it is scary. Have anybody been to Hawaii, to the wreck of the Arizona? You know, when I was there.
It's falling apart.
They're all Japanese.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody, everybody going out there, look at the wreck of the Arizona, they're all, I don't think there was probably 10, 15 Anglos and everybody else was Japanese. It was unbelievable. It's, it just blew my mind, but oh, well.
Where are you going with this?
I don't know, I just had to say that, you know.
You're complaining about my report?
Yeah. Well, it's only 10 after 8. I'm getting even with them.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support? All in favor? Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. All right. Artie baby, this is great.
Yeah, record.